Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, January 23rd. It is 7:02 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. All right, so, members of Town Council that are here remotely are Josh Sutka and Terry Rooney. Town Council members that are here in Town Council chambers, Jason Mauer, Dee Dee Martin, Enid Lapellis, John Form Kelly, Shawna Work, and Donald Lynn Wales. Kevin Reed is not here presently. All right, I am going to make a couple of additions to our agenda this evening. I'm going to make a motion to amend our agenda under unfinished business as item A. Following, same queue property and community center project update executive session anticipated. Is there a second?
Second.
Question by John Form Kelly, second by Enid Lapellis. Any other discussion? Mr. Mauer?
Mr. Chair, just, and then we have our town attorney here, so I'm sure we can make sure of this. I wanted to make sure with notice for executive sessions that we're okay to just amend, add it.
I didn't research that and find anything prohibiting it, but I had similar thoughts as you did, so I did research it. I didn't see anything prohibiting it, so I think it's appropriate.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those who favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. That will be unfinished business, item A. All right, there was a typo in our consented agenda as well as on the resolution itself. Item E, Resolution 23-009, the reappointment of Ed D to the Police Commission. The term ending date should be February 24th, 2026, not February 27th, 2026. So the resolution will be amended to read that. Is there any objection? No, okay. Next, under appointments, Resolution 23-016, Samantha McGoldrick. The term ending date is October 21st, 2023. That is a change to the agenda only. The resolution reflects October 21st, 2023. All right. Now, I am going to use my discretion to move new business, item A, to now. So we'll have the recognition of our kid governor, Ellie Mendez, as first elect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we're very proud and honored to have our very own Ellie Mendez from Monroe Elementary here with us this evening. I'm sure everyone's heard of her wonderful accomplishment. For those that are not aware, the Kid Governor Program is one where fifth graders throughout the state come up with a platform and ideas of how they want to improve their community. I want to thank Mr. Couse for being here tonight as well. I'm sure he can talk more about the program than I could, but it's a wonderful program. And I wanted to actually start by just kind of introducing what Ellie did for, because they come up with a platform and a campaign. And as part of that, there's a final, well, let's see, why is that not working? That's interesting. Hold on one second. Technology is a wonderful thing.
Tell us not.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
All right, so this is the, this is Ellie's platform that her peers across the state voted and selected as the winning platform.
Hi, fifth graders of Connecticut. I'm Ellie, and I want to be your next kid governor. My platform is anxiety and depression. People don't take anxiety and depression for kids as serious as they should. Let me tell you a little secret about myself. I too have been learning how to cope with anxiety and depression. Did you know that 5.6 million kids are diagnosed with anxiety? And 4.2 million kids are diagnosed with depression? This is a real community issue. Thirty-four point five percent of kids were suffering from anxiety and depression. When? During and after the pandemic. Did you know that one in five students have a mental disorder? Can you imagine? And only 20% of those kids receive care from a professional. And they need our support now. My action plan has three amazing platforms. First is the Tap Out Light Station. This is one of my favorites, and I think it will really help students of all ages in their classrooms from stress, anxiety, or forms of sadness that is not allowing them to concentrate. With the Tap Out Light Station, this will allow the students to excuse themselves and walk over to the light station. You or she will then press the light on it, and it will turn red. This will alert the classroom and teach them that, hey, the student is having a moment right now. They will put on their headphones and play pre-program Zen music for three minutes. When the time is up, the students can get up, turn the light green, indicating that they have reset and can go back to participating in the class. My second amazing platform that I'm going to share with you today, I have created Turn My Frown Upside Down Mailbox to help kids with depression and don't know how to share these feelings with anyone. This mailbox will help kids who don't have a voice and want to be heard. When a student feels they need to ask for help and don't know how, they will be able to write down those feelings, thoughts, or concerns, and walk over to the mailbox and put it in. The teacher will then check the mailbox and take an action immediately. My third platform is an interactive website that will allow kids to watch videos, read uplifting articles, and positive quotes. It's okay to have a bad day, make mistakes, take a break. You are stronger than you think you are. How will I get there as your leader? I'm honest. I'm driven for change. And last, and my favorite, teamwork. If we all work together, we can help and stop anxiety and depression today.
Vote for Ellie Mendez.
With that, I'd like to invite Ellie and Dad, if he wants to come down as well, to, and, if you'd like to join me as well. So Ellie, it is my honor to present you with this Town of Monroe Proclamation. I'm going to read it for you, okay? Sorry, it's a lot of whereas, therefore, but bear with me, all right? So whereas, Connecticut's Kid Governor Program, created by the Connecticut Democracy Center, empowers fifth graders to inspire meaningful changes in their community through an immersive civics education program. And whereas, candidates for Connecticut Kid Governor identify a community issue and develop a platform of actions to make positive change in addressing the issue. And whereas, Monroe Elementary School student Elisa Bette Ellie Mendez identified anxiety and depression among students as a significant concern. And whereas, as a candidate for the 2023 Kid Governor, Ellie Mendez developed a platform to address this concern by providing strategies to reduce stress and anxiety, facilitating communications with a trusted adult, and by creating online resources with positive and uplifting messages for kids. And whereas, Ellie's peers selected her to represent Monroe Elementary School as their nominee, and Ellie was chosen as one of the seven finalists in the state. And whereas, thousands of students throughout the state participated and elected Ellie Mendez, who took the oath of office as Kid Governor on January 20th, 2023. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize and commend Ellie Mendez for this remarkable achievement. Now therefore, I, Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, do hereby proclaim that today, January 23rd, 2023, is Kid Governor Ellie Mendez Day in the Town of Monroe. All right, I believe State Representative Scott has something as well for you, very important.
So it's a tradition that started way before my time as state representative. JP Strudinsky was a previous state representative. And what he did was anytime someone in the Town of Monroe got elected for a local town role or position, he gave them a Town of Monroe pin. It's a special pin, as you can see, the First Selectman wears it. So anytime you have an event, this might be cool to have, they show you're truly representing just not, you know, state of Connecticut. Also, remember where you're from, Monroe. So I want to give that to you as a gift, as a congratulations. I will say, when I was at the old State Capitol, watched your inauguration, it was funny. After we were done, there was a bunch of, Lieutenant Governor was there, Attorney General was there, state senators, state representatives, we're all in the building. We were talking at the side, and we mentioned about how the person most likely to be the next governor in that building at that time was you. Like you had the most, the speaking, I whispered over to Senator Moore, who was sitting next to him, and I told him, she seeks better than me, and I am like 40 years older than you almost, so congratulations on that. Keep up the good work, and I'll be there any way I can to help you, so congratulations.
All right, thank you, Mr. First Selectman, thank you. Welcome, State Representative Scott. All right, so just for the record, Councilmember Reed arrived at 7:06 this evening, just prior to the show, Kid Governors submission. I know, yeah, I have Terry here, yeah. All right, I'm going to pass Consent Calendar unless there's an objection. I know objections on passing Consent Calendar as amended. I expect communication items A through I being incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Public participation, is there many members of the public ballot that would like to participate this evening? Please come forward to the microphone, name an address for the record, please. Yeah, sure. Perfect, name an address, please.
My name is Jason Duback. Of 231 Route 8, Searsburg, Vermont. Legal heir to John Duback and Elsie Duback of 373 Spring Hill Road, Maryland. I'm here to express my questions and concerns regarding the Spring Hill Road closure. I was denied the opportunity to be added to the agenda. First knowledge I had of the Spring Hill Road closure was January 10th, 2023, when I received a forwarded article about the road closure from Monroe Sun. So my concerns are specifically the YouTube video of the Monroe, Connecticut Planning and Zoning Meeting from July 7th, 2022. I'm disappointed I was not contacted during this process. I have been told, this is the town attorney, Van Marino's, legal opinion, that all the butters were properly contacted. I disagree. On record is my estranged sister's handwritten note that says, quote, "We are in support of the Spring Hill Road closure." That's entered November 2nd of 2022. But yet the Town of Monroe sent out this certified notification, December 6th, 2022, to my long-dead parents. It was never signed. And it was entered January 13th, 2023, still unsigned.
I pass this round. I would just ask, just hand them in at the end of your speaking, if they're exhibits, okay?
Okay. The most important thing in that exhibit is a handwritten note by my sister that says, "To the Town of Monroe," oh, I'm sorry, says, "To whom it may concern, we are in support of Spring Hill Road discontinuance, Suellen Duback." It was entered at the Town of Monroe, November 2nd, 2022. This is still my opinion, but now actual facts. The Planning and Zoning Meeting, July 7th, 2022. I'd like to let the board know that you were not presented all of the facts or truths and were actually misinformed. Minute mark 110 of that meeting, quote, "Never got connected to Route 111 as a through route," end quote, "and this commission down the road never saw that to be needed," end quote. Did the board know that this road had already been shortened in the past, and it did in fact connect to Route 111? In the past, I believe about 1993, the road was disconnected from Route 111, and the dead end was installed, with Spring Hill Road reconnected to 111 with a new traffic light added on Route 111. Would the board have recommended this same part of Spring Hill Road be disconnected for the second time? This property had approximately 150 feet of road frontage and a dead end close by. Due to this road closure, it will now be an interior lot way less desirable and heavily devalued. I'm fighting for fairness and transparency. This process was started with a misinformed board. Please review and fact-check. Please rescind your referral, which was needed and relied on. And while on the record, I'd like to be added to the agenda for Monday's Town Council meeting to address other reasons and misinformation. I read this to the Town Council this past Thursday on January 19th, 2023. Now specifically to the Town Council. I was denied on all attempts to be added to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Today's news is my probate attorney, Chuck Kermay, today at court, received an extension on the foreclosure sale, which is now reset at May 6th, 2023. And we are discussing a third-party fiduciary. This was done so I can hopefully arrange funds to pay off the past bank debt and settle the estate with my estranged sister, Suellen Duback. I attempted to get a site plan for 225 Monroe Turnpike today, and there is nothing on file, but yet a road closure is apparently imminent. I believe no application of engineering of road closure has been done. I do have the right to appeal this road closure within 120 days of being posted. Oh, goodie, I get to hire a land use attorney now. Town Council can rescind their vote due to improprieties. I still believe all neighbors were not properly notified. Refer to Planning and Zoning Meeting, if you are aware of this meeting, besides just an end result of a referral. The board wanted to be assured of notification during their discussion. They asked all the right questions. Here are some of their quotes. Has anyone talked to 373? 255 gets more land. There is more here than meets the eye. This poor guy in the middle, how's he getting in and out that property? I don't see that. As long as he is going to be notified during this process, I'm comfortable with it. Hold on a second, Rick just said we could put recommendations into our favorable or whatever. I think Rob said we can have, you know, make sure 373 gets 100% notified.
Mr. Duback?
Yes.
You're at about six minutes now. We only allow three minutes per person. You could just maybe summarize the rest of your statement?
I drove three hours one way to get here.
I can understand.
I attempted four times to be put on the agenda, but in actuality, what I read to the Planning and Zoning Department was to let them know that their referral impacted you, and you might not know what's going on.
Mr. Duback, just if you wouldn't mind, I don't mind letting you go on for a little bit more, but if you can just kind of summarize the remainder of your statement, because you've gone on for about double the time individuals are allowed to go on for.
Okay. On Town Council Meeting, 11/7/22, minute mark 19, Mr. Kellogg says, I quote, "I also received letters from the various property owners that are in this area that would be impacted by such a discontinuance, and all these documents are included in your packet, which shows the more supportive of this action." Mr. Kellogg is just referring to Suellen Duback's handwritten note as a property owner impacted by such discontinuance, who's supportive of this action. But yet the proper notification was certified mail to long-dead parents, Elsie and John Duback, sent December 6th, 2022, received unsigned, January 13th, 2023. You can't have it both ways and admit a sibling, next of kin, is a supportive owner contacted. This was, I believe, improperly done. Town Council, please rescind your decision and at minimum restart the notification process to make it fair and transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Duback. Did you want us to have those provided for Selectmen, your exhibits, or what would you like to do with them? Do you want to keep them?
I can't get on it. I can't get a fair shake. I can't get notified. I am doing my due diligence. I tried. What can I do? But the decisions you make greatly impact somebody's future, and I think it was wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Duback.
And I hope to have the money to hire a land use attorney to give.
All right, is there anyone here that would, meaning in the Town Council chambers, that would like to participate at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, going on to those who are here digitally. Please remember to unmute yourself if you'd like to participate at this meeting. Once again, please unmute yourself, please identify yourself by your name so that we can have you participate. Hearing none, I'm closing public participation. All right, appointments. We have one appointment this evening. All right, I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-016, resolve that Town Council of Monroe hereby approves First Selectman's appointment of Samantha McGoldrick of 758 Monroe Turnpike to Parks and Recreation Commission for term ending October 21st, 2023. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by, by Sheriff Lapellis.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilmember Rooney, discussion.
Yeah, I didn't hear you call for me. I was just waiting for you to call on me. Thank you. Mrs. McGoldrick has been a resident in Monroe for 13 years. She graduated a bachelor of science from St. Lawrence University and a master of arts in teaching from Sacred Heart University. She's employed at Vernon Partners and has exceptional experience in project management. Samantha's previously worked in the Parks and Recreation Department. She appreciates our wonderful community and looks forward to getting back to volunteer work on the commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Rooney. Any other discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those who favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. And I believe our appointee is here this evening, Mrs. McGoldrick, if you want to mind coming down.
All right. Raise your right hand, please. Do solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury. Congratulations.
Congrats. Okay. Thank you. All right, so, action items. Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, men and vice chair.
Well, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Plan, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Rooney.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met, but I did meet out in the field the other day in regards to the Wolf Park Project. It looks like that is coming along fine in regards to the field, but other than that, I have nothing else to report. The subcommittee has not met.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Mr. Martin?
I couldn't hear Mr. Rooney clearly, so, in the chance that this is what he might have said, the only notes that I have from their last meeting was that the fields bid had drawn out January 9th. The walkthrough was 17. I don't know whether that happened or not. I haven't talked to Mrs. the walkthrough on the field.
It did, it did.
And the bids are due back on the 17th of February.
Thank you. All right, Town Council Command, Legislative and Administrative Matters, Councilmember Reed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did meet tonight before the council meeting. We discussed three items of new business, the first one being the 2023 Radio Community Service Grant Agreement. We're, we approach that every year, so it shouldn't be too many surprises there. 2308 was the Notice of Exercise, Tenant Option to Renew the Lease with 731 Main Street. And then the third and last item was number 17, 2317. That was the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Letter of Understanding. All were reached consensus to come to council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Councilmember Reed, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you. Just to add something and to make Councilmember Reed happy, I believe the consensus of all three items was yay, money.
I believe it was, yes.
Thank you. I do, I do recall that. Item D, Strategic Plan Committee. We will have a meeting this Wednesday, September 25th, at 6:00 PM here in Town Council Chamber. EMS Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
January. I'm sorry, Mr. Rooney, just before you begin, I misspoke, January 26:00 PM. This is Councilmember Rooney.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, everything is the same as it was last meeting. Just continuing with punch list and the things we need to get finished to get a certificate of occupancy, everything's going fine. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Rooney. Item F, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
And First Selectman's update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I had to step out. Thought that was supposed to be on the printer while I was on the prayer. So I had to do a little quick reprint here. I only have a few updates for tonight. One is I just, I wanted to recognize the Finance Department. This is the sixth consecutive year that they've received an Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, and that was for our, excuse me, fiscal year 21 annual report. It is the highest form of recognition from this agency, and I just, once again, it just reaffirms the high standards of our Finance Department and the governments that they have in place. And then some ribbon cutting updates. Marcello's Italian Eatery, which has maintained its glass meeting, it's in the space formerly is firmly occupied by Carly Anthony's, they're having ribbon cutting on January 26th at 4 o'clock. Dental Associates rescheduled their ribbon cutting for February 1st. That is actually a tentative date. I should have made note of that. It is tentatively rescheduled for February 1st at 5:00 PM. And as you may have seen, BioMarx hosted a ribbon cutting ceremony for their 21,000 square foot expansion. That was done on January 20th. And they invited and were honored to have the governor accept an invitation to attend that, which was nice to have his presence in our community supporting our local businesses. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. All right, oh, Councilmember Martin.
Mr. Kellogg, I have a question for you, if it's not appropriate now, or who is scared to, please let me know. The public speaker of the evening, do you know, or can we know, is he a property owner?
He is, he is not listed on the last completed grant.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's it for action items, unfinished business. We have one item of unfinished business, which was added to our agenda this evening. Item A, St. Jude Property and Community Center Project Update, Executive Session anticipated. I'm going to make a motion to enter Executive Session, inviting the First Selectman and the Town Attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Any discussion?
Just for the record, I just, we have to state the purpose of that we're going into Executive Session.
Sure.
We've done it in the past, and we're discussing the ongoing contract acquisition of a contractual obligation that's permitted to, for us to go into Executive Session.
Okay. Thank you, Town Attorney Lido. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, as this passes 9 to 0, we will enter Executive Session at 7:33 p.m. Good evening, everyone. It is 8:12. We are out of Executive Session. There were no votes taken during Executive Session. Alright, we are on New Business, Item B, Acceptance of the Following Donations That Individually Exceed $1,500. Can I have a motion to accept donation of $1,500 from the Mellon Foundation Incorporated for EMS?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair LaPellis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Mellon Foundation has been very generous for many years, and this is, they've made similar donations for EMS in the past, and we are, and obviously the funds will be put to well use for this department.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, as this passes 8 to 0. I will report that out of Executive Session. Councilmember Rooney is not here. Alright, so Item C, Resolution 23-017, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-017, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe a letter of understanding and any associated documents by and between State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for awarded funds to participate on the Violent Crimes Task Force.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 23-017. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mallor, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. So our Chief, Keith White, has brought to my attention that the State of Connecticut is awarding certain funds that are coming through ARPA, that will be dispersed to selected local police departments to participate in this Violent Crimes Task Force. It's under the command of the Connecticut State Police with local law enforcement assistance. It is a program that we have participated in the past. The Chief has advised me that it is something that is very beneficial to the town as well for a variety of reasons. These are things that a regional approach are very, very helpful. So through this, we will get the funding of over $50,000, which will offset the salary and overtime costs of an officer participating in that task force.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, adopting Resolution 23-017, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, as this passes 8 to 20. Second public participation, is there anyone that would like to participate regarding Item A of New Business, St. Jude Property and Community Center Project Update, or the recognition of the Kid Governor? Okay, I am going to close second public participation, and I'm going to end this meeting at 8:16 p.m. Have a great night, everyone.